Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Monday, May 12th, 2025 Blue Springs Planning Commission meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to apply the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone, present this evening and watching from home. Tonight's agenda consists of...I need a roll call first.
Okay.
Let's find that.
Sounds good.
I knew I was missing something.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Here.
Commissioner Pumphrey? Commissioner Stokenberry?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioners Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Crowder?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Present.
Commissioner Howe?
Here.
Chairperson Hennig?
Here.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Tonight's agenda consists of the minutes from the last meeting on April 28th. Item two is Unified Development Code text amendment for body art code amendments. Item three, conditional use permit for B Lash Inc. Item number four is the master alternative sign for McAllister's Deli. Item number five is a community development report and adjournment. At this time, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda for the approval of the April 28th, 2025 meeting minutes with one correction. I noticed on page two, it referenced Chairperson Hennig when it was Vice Chair Howe.
Okay.
So I'd like a motion, including with that change?
Yeah.
Got a motion? You have a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, I will open the public hearing for item number two, Unified Development Code text amendment, UDCT 04259553, for body art code amendments. At this time, I'll ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Josh Newell.
The city would like to enter exhibits one through eight.
Thank you, sir. Anybody here that would like to speak about it, in favor or opposition, please stand and be sworn in. I see one guy.
Because I'm swearing in this one. You're about to give this case to the group subcap?
I do.
Thank you. Mike, tell us about this.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is a proposed UDC or Unified Development Code text amendment for the Body Art Services section of the code. Specifically, the amendments are to Section 404.240E under the Downtown Development Code, permitted uses and uses allowed by conditional use, and also Section 405.050.35, Body Art Services. The current city code does not allow Body Art Service land uses, which includes piercings, tattoos, permanent makeup or microblading, which is considered to be a tattoo under the state law now, or any of those types of uses that meet that definition in the Downtown Development Code area. So any of the downtown zoning districts, T5, T4, or T3. Further, Body Art Services have a number of special use standards that were adopted when the Body Art Services land use was created in 2019. Those special use standards relate to the number of Body Art Services businesses that are allowed to be in the city, as well as setbacks to residential land uses in districts, parks, schools, and churches. At the March 31st, 2025 City Council work session, staff presented information related to the city's requirements for Body Art Services. At the conclusion of the discussion, City Council directed staff to bring forward a code amendment, a UDC amendment, to amend the regulations to allow for more Body Art Service providers in the city, require annual proof of state licensing as part of the annual city business licensing process, and to potentially allow for Body Art Services to be in an allowed or a land use that could be allowed in the downtown zoning district. The proposed amendment does all three of those, and I'll get to that in a moment. These recommendations from the Planning Commission will go to the May 19th City Council meeting. As I previously mentioned, the original Body Art Service regulations were adopted in, I apologize, March 29th of 2018. So I had that, it was not, not 2019, 2018. The proposed amendments here are identified by either the stricken language or underlying language. So under 404.240, the Downtown Development Code E, which is permitted uses and uses allowed by conditional use, it says that these, within the covered area of the DDC, a wide variety of uses from residential, commercial are allowed, and conditional uses or structures must be approved by the Downtown Review Board. That will need to do a code amendment as well to eliminate reference to that, since that has been disbanded. Under number two, number one being the uses permitted by right, number two is uses permitted by conditional use permit in either mixed use or commercial building types, and the proposed amendment is to add a L, Body Art Services. So that would allow those in commercial or mixed use building types in any of the downtown zoning districts. Section 405.050 are the special use standards for Body Art Services. A reads that it's a conditional use, so all Body Art Services in the city need to have a conditional use permit. To date, I don't believe any of the pre-existing ones that were in existence prior to 2018 had a conditional use permit. So none of them have them, but we have existing businesses that are sort of legal non-conforming because they were in effect at the time that new standard took place. Body Art Services may not locate or expand any existing operation within 500 feet of any residential use or district, church, school, or public park. The distance between these uses shall be measured in a straight line from the boundary of any property containing the Body Art Service and the boundary of any property zoned residential or in use for residential purpose, church, school, or public park. The second is that, and these are the two existing ones, A and B are the existing code. No permit or license may be issued for a Body Art establishment where it is determined that the total number of such facilities will exceed a population density factor of one establishment per, the current code is 15,000 residents, based upon the decennial census. This shall not restrict multiple artists from co-locating in an establishment. The staff has proposed to add a C to this, which states that no permit or license shall be issued for Body Art Service establishment or Body Art Service provider without providing evidence of licensing from the state of Missouri. So that was a specific request from council to ensure that they meet all state licensing requirements. The proposed amendment, also to C, is to reduce the number, well, to reduce the per-capita ratio. So from going from one establishment per 15,000 to one establishment per 6,000 residents, which would, in effect, almost double the amount that we would have available in the city. However, the setback requirements of 500 feet would apply, and proof of licensing from the state of Missouri would also apply before any business license could be issued for one of those. And so the process, as it would work, if somebody would apply for a conditional use permit to do a Body Art Service, they would have to show that they meet all these requirements or ask for an alternative development standard to those requirements. The staff would do a count of allowed establishments per the census, and then they would have to provide evidence of licensing. So those are the four specific amendments to Body Art Services. Allow them as a conditional use permit in downtown. Well, three, actually. Change the ratio and then require state licensing. The Development Advisory Code recommended approval for yes, zero, no of the UDC text amendment on April 22nd of 2025, with the additional recommendation that the ratio of businesses to residents of the city be completely eliminated, and therefore there would be no cap or limit on the number of Body Art Service providers in the city. So that was just a Development Advisory Code recommendation from that, from that committee up to Planning Commission and as part of the Planning Commission recommendation, or it will go along with the Planning Commission recommendation to the City Council. Staff reviewed the proposed UDC text amendments according to 403.020 of the code, which outlines a criteria for those. Staff feels that it is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, that the change is consistent with the purpose of the Development Code, which is to stay up to date with changing trends in the city and businesses, whether the proposed amendment is necessary because of change or changing social values, or socio or economic conditions, and the recommendations of staff. So we reviewed those, and we find that it meets those criteria, and therefore we recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I have, I have, Chair. Why did the ratio change from 15, or six to 15? Who made that change and why did that change come about?
That was a direct change that came about from the work session with City Council. So at that work session, there was some desire to increase the amount of Body Art Service providers that we could have in the city, and the number that staff was directed to bring forth in a code amendment was one per 6,000 residents.
Thank you.
You mentioned that will only Body Art businesses be required to get a CUP if they're downtown or anywhere?
Anywhere in the city.
Anywhere. Will the, are the, do the existing Body Art businesses, are they required to show proof of licensing?
Not at this time, they're not. We only have a few different businesses that are required to show proof of state licensing as part of their annual business license, such as liquor stores. Gosh, there was one I just saw the other day.
So this will require...
Commercial daycares and other certain land uses that require, that are more, you know, have more oversight at the state level and, you know, as to the way they conduct their business. With Body Art, it would be cleanliness, following the right procedures, utilizing the correct tools, all of that would be done at the state level. And so ensuring that they have an active state license that is properly displayed per state license would be then a continuation, and the city would not interest, if this is approved, the city would not issue a business license unless the provider showed evidence of the state license.
And that applies to existing ones, too, so they're not grandfathered in, not having to show license?
That would be an interesting legal question. I think it would be, I think it would apply only to new businesses that come in because this regulation, they haven't been required to do that before, but I don't know how that would fit in. James, would you have an idea of how other cities might have handled that in the past?
I'd have to look into it a little bit more, but I think renewing the license would require then to abide by the current code. But let me look into that a little bit more to give you a definite answer on that.
I think that would make sense because each time they apply, like, so if this gets adopted and they've already had their business license issued for this year, then they would not need to do it. Next year would be a new business license request or renewal, and so then they would need to show that they're complying with code.
That's what seems fair and right to me, and I think it would procedurally be, not to get into what you guys do as staff, but if it passes to send the existing ones a notice stating that when their business license come due next year, that they're going to be required to.
Yes, that would be part of our public outreach after, if this gets approved, we would reach out to all existing businesses and let them know of these new requirements.
So the way this reads now, do we know if we're approving old ones, required license at the next business license application or no?
This is just a recommendation to that. We can have a definitive answer by the time we take this to City Council next Monday.
Well, being that they have the final say on it, I'll just go on record saying I would hope that, I favor that venue of it, that the existing ones be required, when their business license is renewed as well, to keep them all on a level playing field of having to show the same state licensing.
And one other item I just noticed in here that I think we would maybe want to change or at least have in the version that we take to Planning or to City Council, is that this 1 to 15 or 1 to 6,000 ratio is based on the last decennial census, which is every 10 years. Our population has grown since the decennial 2020 census, with our most recent population estimate putting us over 60,000. So might suggest that to council or leave that as a discussion for you as well, is do we leave that as the decennial census for the next 10 years, or we do do that based upon the annual population estimate that's adopted by the City Council every June?
Decennial is every decade?
Yes.
I'm still hung up on 6,000. Like, that seems way too low to me.
As in how many it would allow?
Yeah.
So in essence...
I think a better number would be 10,000, but that's...
So as of right now, if we used, the current city population were over 6,000, so we would be allowed to have five in the city, because you are allowed to have one for the 0 to 15,000 population range, 15,001 to 30,000, 30,001 to 45,000, 45,001 to 60,000, and we clipped the 60,000 mark, you could have a fifth. The one per six would allow 10. The other options that were thrown out by council in the discussion were one per 5,000, which would allow 12 in the city. One per 10 would really only allow six or seven, so that would only be an additional two. And then, of course, the Development Advisory Committee recommends getting rid of that ratio altogether and letting the market take care of it.
I'm all for ratios, especially after the check cashing payday loan fiasco we had.
So.
I don't know.
I have. Could you touch on what other cities' ratios are as well?
The only other two cities I'm aware of that have ratios are Independence and Raytown. No other city I'm aware of has ratios that limit the number. If you bear with me for a moment.
So at least some of it has no ratio on it?
They do not. Let's see if I can bring this up here real quick. It may not have been in this...
I mean, Raytown and Independence are very good examples of increased ratios.
May not have been in that, but I believe they are, at least one of them is one per 15. That may be Raytown's, and I could see Independence is allowing more just because their population is almost double that of Blue Springs. But those were the two that we based our code off of when we wrote it back in 2018.
Yeah, based on the explosion, it seems like to me, the explosion of popularity of tattoos, and also considering the fact that this is the type of business that a lot of them are very small businesses, perhaps just one person operating it, I would certainly, before this, the ratio of 1 to 6,000, I would actually be more in favor of the 1 to 5. It sounds like that would allow us one possibly or two more licenses for the city. That's my thoughts on that.
One of the, a couple of the other items that were brought up during the discussion with City Council is that prior to '22 or '23, there was gray area as to whether or not the state considered microblading, in particular, permanent makeup or semi-permanent makeup to be considered tattoo. They changed the state law, and I think it went into effect in 2023, that it is clear that the state considers microblading to be a tattooing business. And therefore, under our code, it falls under Body Art Services. In looking at how many business licenses we have issued, or just a Google search of how many service providers we have in the city, there are a number of spas, estheticians, nails, hair salons, things of this, that awful, also offer this as a service, the permanent or semi-permanent makeup or the microblading process. The other idea is, the other concept that was brought up is that because of the existing ones that we have, such as Butches and Tattoo Over on Seven Highway and some of the other ones that are legal non-conforming, those businesses are likely never to change anything about themselves, or expand, or try to renovate, or make themselves better, or more appealing to kind of the new social climate of the people getting tattoos. You know, we had a similar request down on, in downtown, but it wasn't allowed at the time, but that business owner specifically wanted to do fine line tattooing for women, and do it in a safe environment, in a clean, you know, spa-looking environment, so that their women clientele wouldn't be intimidated by going into a traditional stereotypical tattoo shop. And so our cap has, and the legal non-conforming businesses, it's actually created kind of an almost artificial, you know, cap on the quality or types of places we get. And so really, the only places that you're going to be able to get a tattoo in if this stays is the same places you've always been able to get a tattoo in, and anybody trying to do something different or new, unique, not saying anything against the existing one we have, but something that's catering to a different clientele would not be allowed because we just simply don't have any more that are allowed to be done.
Chair.
Yes.
Quick question. What's the ratio now for the regular, quote, "regular" tattoo shop?
It's one per 15,000 residents.
Idiots.
Yes.
Okay.
And how many do we have?
I had this information. I think we have four. We have four, and...
That would leave room for only one more.
That would leave room for only one more, and we already know we have more spas or places that are offering this service already. So the 1 to 6,000 number came about through discussion at City Council, so that's why we brought that forward.
Anybody else? At this time, I would normally ask for the applicant to speak. Well, the applicant is the city. We just heard from you, so assuming there's nothing else there. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this? Anybody who would like to speak against it? Seeing none, I will close the public comments section of this public hearing. Anything else from staff or the applicant?
Depending upon the will of the commission, I think you could either move to amend all of the proposed amendments, or you could vote on each of them individually.
Okay.
That is certainly something that you could do if there's not a consensus that everybody wants to do the same things. So specifically, there would be the one for allowing them in downtown. The one for changing the ratio from one to, from 15, 1 to 15 to 1 to 6, and the requirement for evidence of state licensing of Missouri, and potentially, there could be a fourth added to that if somebody wanted to put forth using the annual population estimate adopted by City Council rather than the decennial census.
That's for all of us to decide up here. For the 5,000 mark, I think that adds one or two extra with the popularity.
I would be in support of that or doing away with it at all.
Right. So nothing else? Anything else from the commission up here before I close the public hearing? Public hearing is now closed. At this time, I would ask for a motion, and again, it can be a motion for all three, the way it's written, or you can make a motion individually, downtown or no downtown district, the ratio, and then requiring the state licensing.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the downtown or no downtown.
Okay.
Please tell me if I do this correctly. I move to approve the Unified Development Code, UDCT 04259554, Body Arts Code Amendment for the downtown or no downtown.
Is it, is it four or is it three?
My apologies. 9554?
I had 9553, but I may have missed, I may have a typo somewhere in here. Tracy, do you have the case number?
I have 9553.
I will say 553 then?
Okay. Well, I just, or I could have, I think it is 9553, so I apologize if I put 954.
No, it was my mistake.
As a rule of procedure, I did not close the public hearing, so the public hearing's closed, so now we can continue.
Can you make me do that again?
I'd just like to hit that gap.
Thanks. So motion...
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Was that for all of the amendments?
For the downtown or no downtown.
Okay, so that one in particular.
So you're making a motion in favor of downtown?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we're going to do these individually?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
Would you, would you bring up the, each one on the screening?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion for the downtown portion only, and it's to allow them in the downtown area. Having said that, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yep, second.
Do. And Tracy, can we roll call this, please?
Yes, of course. Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioners Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Crowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennig?
Aye.
That passes unanimously, and along with the other others will be heard at the next City Council meeting. I will now ask for a motion about the ratio of Body Art licenses allowed in the city.
Chair. Yes, sir. May I, how do I amend? May I amend it to 5,000 versus 6,000?
I think you just make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
You could move that, you move to approve the text amendment as, with, with an amendment to a ratio of one per 5,000.
Okay.
Does that sound right, James? Okay.
I move to approve the amendment on the ratio portion for one per 5,000.
And a second?
Second.
Second. Another roll call, please. Tracy?
You got it. All right. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioners Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Crowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
No.
Commissioners Stokenberry?
No.
Chairperson Hennig?
Aye.
And that motion passes. I will now ask for a motion on the third portion of it, requiring the state licensing.
Chair. Yes, sir. I move to approve the amendment to include allowing state, or to make state licensing as part of this amendment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And another roll call, please. Tracy?
Commissioners Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Crowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennig?
Aye.
That passes, and that also will be heard along with the other two items at the next City Council meeting on Monday, May 5th, here in this room at 16:00.
May 19th.
May what?
19th.
May 19th? It is the 12th.
Yes.
Moving on.
Okay.
I will open the public hearing for agenda item number three, the conditional use permit, CUP 04259533 for B Lash Inc. I will ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Josh Newell.
The city would like to enter exhibits one through eight.
Thank you, Josh. All those who wish to speak about this matter, please stand and be sworn in.
Do you want to run ahead, please? Do you swear in this? You're about to give this case to the group subcap?
I do.
Ms. Frye, a presentation for us?
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you is a request for an approval of the conditional use permit to allow the operation of B Lash Inc., a beauty studio offering microblading services located at 103 Southwest 7 Highway, Unit E. This location is within the downtown commercial district, which requires a conditional use permit approval for any Body Art Service. In conjunction with this request, the applicant is seeking approval of the alternative development standards to waive the minimum 500-foot separation requirement from both residential uses and a nearby church. The site is located within the T5 Urban Center zoning district, which is defined as a higher-density, mixed-use area, which is commonly found near the center of pedestrian shed and along key corridors. It is important to note that the related Unified Development Code text amendment, UDCT It is important to note that the related Unified Development Code text amendment, UDC zero four two five nine five five three? Cause I have four. It would increase the allowable number of body art services establishments and would permit body art services within the downtown development code when located within a commercial or mixed-use building subject to, to a conditional use permit. And to clarify the nature of the services offered, Missouri law has stated microblading is defined as a form of body art. Specifically involves using a handheld tool to implant pigment into the skin to create semi-permanent eyebrow enhancements. In the state of Missouri, the service is regulated under the Missouri Revised Statutes of Chapter three twenty-four. And practitioners must be licensed through the Missouri Division of Professional Registration, Office of Tattooing, Body Piercing, and Branding. And the license ensures the individual will meet the standards for training, hygiene, and facility conditions in order to protect the public health and safety. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with the alternative development standard with the two conditions list, listed in the staff report. I do want to point out that the site is located here at Seven and Main. They're all zoned the same, but these are duplexes, a two-family uh used for residential uses. And then the church is located, where was that church located? If I have it.
Two oh six.
Two oh six, and the church is located here.
Or two oh two.
Was it two oh two?
Yeah, it's near the southwest cor, near Southwest Walnut and Eighth Street intersection in the northwest, northeast corner of that.
So the property line does a, but a residential use, which is what the applicant is referring for as a waiver. And then I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Chair.
Yes.
Would the condition be just for microblading or would, if they wanted to do other types of tattooing, would it allow for that as well? Or would we have to make that a condition?
I think with the business uh license, it's specified exactly what they can do, so in this, uh, with this applicant in general, I believe it's just the studio enhancements of, um, and I would let the applicant describe her business more in depth, um, if it offers other tattoo services.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would suggest that if that is something that this planning commission would like to make as a recommendation as a condition of approval, that it is only for microblading and not tattoo. Uh, that that's something you could do, um, but as it's presented, it is for body, it is land use of body art services, which could be either tattoo or microblading or other body art services.
Okay.
Go ahead. No, I'm, forgive me, I'm wrong here, but with what we just passed on to city council, if it passed to the city council for the uh, the ratio, it doesn't matter if it's gonna be tattoo, microblading, whatever, correct?
It would not matter for this current business at this time, no.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the amendment, if it gets approved by council, would allow it in downtown. This property is zone T-five, so that would take care of that. Um, the, it would allow for conditional use for the business to exist there if the alternative development standard for waiving the five hundred foot separation uh in its entirety were to be approved as well by city council.
Yeah. The five hundred foot doesn't bother you, it's still the ratio that.
The ratio would still be in place, it's the, if it weren't for the, if it weren't for the proximity of any residential properties right now, um, they would just be requesting a conditional use permit without any deviations or modifications.
Gotcha, okay.
Have you ever seen any letters of opposition?
We did not receive any letters of opposition.
We did not receive any phone calls?
No.
Or anything that I'm aware of?
No emails, no.
Any other questions before we hear from the applicant? All right. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Ready for me to start? Okay, sorry, I'm a little nervous. My name is Brittany Manning and I'm the owner of B Lashed Inc. I am asking for your approval of my conditional use permit. I own a spa down in downtown Blue Springs on a hundred and third, I'm sorry, one oh three Southwest Main Street. I've been there almost about five years. I have clients that come, I'm sorry, four years. I have clients that come from all over, I do microblading, I don't do anybody or everything is kind of on the face. I have clients that, um, we do enhancements, so I have clients that can't do their own makeup anymore. So that is something that I offer a service to them to help them with that. Um, I have co, clients that have had cancer that I help, um, so it's, it's more of a spa, it's not a tattoo establishment. Um, my clientele ranges from ages forty-five to eighty, um, I have a one in, one out. I don't just have people sitting around, we play spa music there, um, I have all of my license, licensing as well. You guys have any questions for me?
Any questions?
You said you've been in business in Blue Springs, are, you're already in business?
Yes, I've been there four years. I started out with lash extensions and then I grew my business and expanded to semi-permanent makeup.
Brittany, you, you seem to be very popular, I've seen, seen great reviews about you.
Um, I only have one four star and it's just because I couldn't take the client on anymore. So yes, I, I love my clients, they love me, they travel, like I said, from all over, I have people that are flying out of town to come see me, we just have a great relationship. I love the community, I love the people here, I don't want to leave.
I like, I like the fact that you're working in the world of oncology because we have a lot of patients, people that are dealing with cancer, so that's, that's wonderful.
They've lost their brows, they've lost their lashes, um, I deal with people with alopecia, it's, it's a lot of things that I, I help with.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone, and you may, you may say that, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this project? Please. Um, if you did not get sworn in, which I don't think you did, would you please get sworn in real quick?
I do.
And just start out with your name and complete address, please.
My name is Kimberly Compton, my complete address is seventy-eight hundred South Cook Road, Blue Springs, Missouri, six four zero two nine. I am the owner of this property, um, Brittany is my client and we adore everything she has done and what she is bringing to our property. I will have to say that she has enhanced the property greatly with her coming in and the clientele she has brought with her. So I do not think that what we're thinking of as a ta, standard tattoo process is at all what this is being, um, housed in our area. We are trying very hard to bring up our area into what would be a younger population, something that's more popular for the next generation coming up. And so bringing people in like Brittany and others that we have brought in recently have had a great effect of that. And so I think that she is a great addition and I would be very sad to see her leave more than just a monetary issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to speak in favor of? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Seeing none, uh, we'll close the public comments section of this public hearing, and before I close it altogether, anything else from staff?
Just one second. Nope, we do not.
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. And which, all, all we just heard from you, is there anything else that you'd like to add?
Okay.
Anything else from the commission up here? All right, I will close the public hearing. And I would ask for a motion for the rezoning.
Chair.
Yes.
I'd move to approve uh conditional use permit, CUP zero four two five nine five three three with the two staff conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and can I get a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennig?
Aye.
Perfect.
That motion carries and will be heard by the city council Monday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at six P M here in this room. Our final agenda item is uh item number four, Alternative Sign Plan for McAllister's Deli, A S P zero three two five nine five three zero.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you is a request for an approval of an amendment to the master alternative sign plan for the Adams Dairy Landing Development and Shopping Center. The applicant on behalf of McAllister's Deli is seeking approval to install a ground-mounted monument sign at one two two one Northeast Coronado Drive. This request represents a deviation from the existing Adams Dairy Landing Master Sign Plan, which was originally approved under case number A S P zero six zero eight one seven eight zero, which establishes monument signage standards for art out parcel tenants within the shopping center. The subject property is located the northeast corner of northeast Adams Dairy Parkway and Northeast Coronado Drive, within the Adams Dairy Shopping Center. The proposed monument sign will be placed within a landscaped island along Northeast Coronado Drive, directly in front of the McAllister's Deli future building. And the sign proposed is located approximately sixteen feet from the southern property line. The monument sign is going to be, they have an island that's already there on site and they will be placing the monument sign there. And it's already showing the landscape that would be around it to soften the actual monument sign itself. And then this is what the monument sign, it shows dark there, but it has kind of a brick, uh, they haven't determined if they're gonna go with the black, but it'll be a darker shade of the brick, and then it has the uh, I don't know what to call those. The steps from the top, so it will actually blend in nicely with already designed buildings that are in that area. Excuse me, staff has reviewed the proposed signage and finds that the request is consistent with the intent and overall aesthetics of the development. And staff recommends approval of the master alternative sign plan amendment with the one condition outlined in the staff report. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Is the applicant here, would you like to speak?
No.
No applicant. Uh, anything, anything up here, any questions? Nothing else, um, I'll move on and, and go straight and ask for a motion.
Chair.
Yes?
Move to approve A S P zero three two five nine five three zero, McAllister Deli on Coronado Drive with the one staff condition.
I got a motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes the one staff condition. Our final thing is the monthly community development report for April.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Uh, before you this evening is the April twenty twenty-five monthly report. Um, we had twenty-one single-family detached houses approved in the month of April. That's um up about thirteen from this time last year. And we're up to fifty-two total single-family homes that have been permitted, which is also up fifteen points from this point uh last year. Um, there was no multifamily housing approved um in April and there hasn't been any, well, there has been no multifamily housing permitted in April and there hasn't been any permitted up to this point in the year. Um, we had quite a few miscellaneous residential additions and alterations this month, um, and several new commercial buildings as well. And we've done a hundred and forty-seven permits, uh, and three hundred and eighty-four for the year. Uh, construction square feet was up significantly over this time last year at almost a hundred and thirty thousand. Uh, total construction cost is not quite triple what it was at this point last year. And we've had about a hundred, little over a hundred and fifty more inspections than we did in this time last year in April. Um, so as you see the uh bar graph, um, getting into that point of the year where lots of single-family homes are being permitted. Uh, code cases are also going up with a hundred and twenty uh related to public health, safety, and welfare for a hundred and seventy total code cases in the month of April. Uh, code cases will go up, um, and be steady throughout the summer. And lastly, uh, took quite a few cases through both the Planning Commission and city council during the month of April, including the Blue Springs High School, um, asphaltic surfaces, uh, Hy-Vee Third Platte, McAtee Lane, Tim Hortons, five hundred R D Mies, and then Seven Brew, so quite a bit of activity, uh, planning activity in the month of April. And we also took um quite a few sign permits during the month of April as well.
Is there any questions that the Planning Commission has on this report? Looks pretty standard numbers. All right, well, thank you all. Um, as a public service announcement, I'd like to uh share everybody that one of those code cases is mine. If you are rebuilding your decks in the city of Blue Springs and your deck is thirty inches or more off the ground, you're required to get a permit. I did not know that, so now I'm backtracking and going through that process, so let that be a little lesson. It's much easier to get it before I did not realize, and even after. So, having said that, um, is there any other business from anyone else?
Um, I think this would be a good opportunity to let you guys know, um, my last day at the city will be Friday, May twenty-third. Um, so I just wanted to thank you guys for, for, you know, being able to be here with you guys and all the great experiences I've had and I'll miss you guys, but I at least wanted to say something that this will be my last planning commission, but um I know you guys will continue to do a great job and staff will do a great job, so um, I think the city's in great hands.
Good luck.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure and we wish you nothing but the best. Okay, well, thank you. If there's no, no other business from anyone up here, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion is now, this meeting is now adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.